And then GSBS and then a roundtable, anything that the board needs to make sure that we're all aligned with going into Board meeting later on this afternoon. My first agenda item, we have Georgia from Davis Demographics. And just as a recap, she's helped us look at the growth and the number projections in our schools and in our neighborhoods. And at the ground level. So I know you've been driving neighborhoods and developments over the last, this week, correct?
Not this week, we were out in December. This week I was training another client that's up in the area.
But you, you have been out here?
I have.
Perfect. So we'll turn the time over to you, we'll have questions if you have questions for us. I know you have a report or a presentation, but we're glad you're here and glad you made the trip from Dallas, Texas.
Absolutely, I'm so glad to be here. As I've said probably a dozen times already, I always enjoy my time in Utah, the people here are always so genuine and sweet. So it's always a pleasure. So we can get started. So as I walk through this, if y'all have any questions, feel free to ask me. I will do the best to my ability and if I can't, then I will get those answers for you. And just as a recap, really quick, everybody here has, is anybody new to the board or has everybody heard this book, some of this information before? I just want to double check.
Yeah, I think this is an update from the board. So it would be good to hear where you left off and where we are and.
Perfect. I just, I wanted to make sure I just didn't go into too much detail, right? So if y'all have heard most of it before. As we do every year, this is the first, we've been working with y'all for multiple years, but we've just recently, like the end of last year, signed another contract. The first in a five-year study. So once again, we've updated the data set for the district. We've looked at all the active, proposed and future residential development. We've analyzed your students and all of the trends that's happening in the area. And we've completed your population forecast. Next slide, please. Just a few key takeaways. So you're expected for your overall student population to increase about thirty percent over the next ten years. Not right away, ten years. So don't let that be too alarming. But it is growing and it's, you can lead that to two things, your development and your inward migration. So you've got a lot of people moving into the area because there, we have seen a huge influx of people moving from denser neighborhoods, inner cities to areas that are a lot more comfortable, a lot more beautiful, a lot more welcoming. And alright, so your development, so this year, so you may see an increase in the numbers, but what the difference is this year on development is I've gone ahead and added in the future. So your total units for active, planned and future units is about ten thousand seven hundred and sixty-two units. And after your ten-year forecast, we're still expecting about seventy-five hundred units to come online. So we project for ten years and then after those ten years, we're still expecting seventy-five hundred units to come into play. So there's, there's a lot of development coming up. And then your birth rates over the past six years have been fairly steady-ish, about four hundred and ten to four hundred and eighty children. This is, Utah as a whole, their birth rates are declining. So this area is seeing a little bit of a decline, but it's, it's holding kind of true.
So are we, are we pretty congruent with the state of Utah or are birth rates a little higher?
I think, I don't, I don't think y'all's birth rates are higher, I'd have to go back and look. But it's not a huge impact at this time. Alrighty, thank you ma'am. And then, so breaking it down by your grade configurations, elementary can see over the next five years, seven hundred and fifty, seven hundred and fifty students increased. Middle school could see about three hundred and sixty-two. And your district high school is expected about seventeen hundred more students. So, I don't, don't panic, I'm sorry.
Can you go back?
We're just trying to do some math right now.
District high school population could experience seventeen hundred.
In five years?
And I can go back and double check that.
That's an update.
If that's a.
That's a bigger number than what we've had.
Okay. I will definitely go back and double check myself because I'm not infallible. And let me see.
No, we're not really calling you into question. We drive around this candy, it's just, it's just crazy.
Let's see, I'm, if anybody's really good at math in their head, five years, ten thousand four hundred and ninety-six students. And your current year was eight thousand seven hundred and thirty, oh, that's the full rate, hold on. So thirty-one hundred minus twenty-five hundred. Is that six hundred?
Yeah.
So then maybe that's meant to be ten years. So that could be an error in my part for that, I apologize.
Is it five years or ten years?
So the, there was supposed, the first two.
We were really gonna have to hustle.
I know, I'm so sorry if I sent y'all into panic. I'm the.
You kind of did.
I'm, I'm so sorry.
So that's ten years, do you think?
I do.
I need to look at a count.
I think that number we can go on the other slide that said ten years, twenty whatever, hundred students.
Yes, I apologize.
We're gonna put on a big banner on Main Street.
I know. Okay, so that is a typo. Please negate that bullet point, I will come back to it with that number. Cause it's looking like here, about nine hundred and fifty over ten years. That's what I'm getting.
So are the two above it correct, the next five years?
Yes. Yes. Those are correct.
So seventeen, sixteen, nine. That's not right.
That's not right. No, as soon as, even I was like, mm, I don't know that one. So sorry about that, y'all. Okay. Okay, so as y'all know, the biggest portion of what we do is we start with your student data. It is the, the basis of everything that we do. And so we start off by getting the information from your district, we geocode it, we have it validated and then we move forward. Next slide, please. Once we get that, that's the student data and we, we already have your historical data, we put it on a map. And this is what you, you start to see, these colors, laying on color, so every one of these points is a student. And every different color is a, is a different school year. Okay? And so you start to see that exchange and where some areas are growing and some areas like the, the yellow, I believe is your current school year. And you start to just see that difference. And then, next please. Alright, so, and then we can translate that to a heat map and our student density. And as you can see, your Old Mill and Daniels Canyon is where you have your larger densities. Those yellow portions, the yellow to red, is where it gets really dense. The lighter blue is where you've got students, but it's not as dense. So it's just kind of great, like a weather map. So the other thing that we do is we, as y'all know, we have study areas, we've taken your school district, we've broken them down into little pieces that allow us to do more of a granual study on those individual pieces and then they sum up to be the bigger whole. So each of those is like a neighborhood, sometimes broken down even smaller depending on the number of students that are withheld within. We try not to have more than a hundred students in a study area, it just gives us a really good basis for study. And then we, we pay really close attention to how we cut them. This year I did end up cutting a few more. As you can see, like one seventy-nine up there in that top right corner become one seventy-nine A, B and C. There was a development that's up in that top right-hand corner that we don't see on here, that I wanted to bring into its own study area. Next slide, please. So this is your attendance matrices and I apologize, it's probably a little bit hard to read. So I know that a lot, a lot of y'all have seen this multiple times. But I'm gonna explain it to you anyways in this, this kind of way. So think about the schools that are listed in the column on the left-hand side as a spatial area, okay? Those are your schools of residence, so those are where the students live, the zone in which they live. And then we have the schools that are along the top and that is where they are enrolled. So for example, you have five hundred and eighteen, I apologize if I get these numbers a little off because I can't see it very well. Five hundred and eighteen students that, oh, thank you, that live inside Daniels Canyon School District. Cause everything that we, their school zone, everything that we do is spatially based, okay? And then four hundred and sixty-eight of those five hundred and eighteen students live in Daniels Canyon or actually attending Daniels Canyon, okay? So then the remaining students, that difference, you've got twenty students that are living in Daniels Canyon that are attending Heber, ten are attending JR Smith, et cetera. So that breaks it down that way across. Then when you go down, you've got, Daniels Canyon has a total enrollment of five hundred and thirty-four students. Well, of those students that are enrolled at Daniels Canyon, twenty of one of them live in Heber Valley, seventeen live in JR Smith and so forth. And then we look at, and these are like living in your zones, so then we take into consideration non-resident students, so these are your out-of-district students, students, and then unmatched student. An unmatched student could be somebody that is state protected, so we don't have an address for them. They could also be somebody that had a P.O. box or maybe there's, maybe there was just something wrong with the address and it just didn't geocode for us. So there's a few things that could cause a student to be geocoded, or to not be geocoded and to be classified as unmatched. And then we kind of piece it apart and we bring it back together, that, that number should equal the student verification form that you saw on the previous page. Alright, so taking that forward, on this right side, you have what we call a utilization report. So your campus capacity and then breaking it through, then we end up with resident students versus enrolled. So that's a really, really important thing to remember is resident versus enrolled, okay? We have to know who our resident students are so that we can apply those trends to enrollment, right? And so, once we know that, then we can start to make the wise decisions and answer questions that we need answered. If all of your resident students at the capacities that are listed here, if all of your resident students were to attend Daniels Canyon, you'd be at sixty point nine percent capacity. However, at this moment with your enrollment, you are at sixty-two point eight percent capacity, that is how that's read. You have sixty-four students transferring in to Daniels and fifty students in that residential area transferring out. Meaning that they're choosing to attend a different school. So you have a net resident students, a non-resident student of one, which matches that number that was on the previous, on the left side, for a total net transfers of, transfer in of sixty-five, so sixty-four plus one, sixty-five. And that's, any questions on the matrices?
Just to clarify.
Yes ma'am.
These are October first numbers, correct?
Yes, these are, we do.
They're not current, they're October first with the state.
Right, we, we do request that the, the student data that we start with, so we keep it apples to apples every year, is associated with the information that y'all provide to the state and.
Also, we've asked, we've asked Davis to update the capacity numbers there to match kind of what we're using with GSBS, so that'll be coming too in an update.
Correct, that, that will be coming. And, and so that's just kind of the way to read this, so you can see your utilization, what it could be if everybody in that attendance area attended your school. So if there's, yep, perfect. And this is your middle school, it could be read the same way. Seven hundred and eighty-eight live inside Rocky Mountains. Seven hundred and three are actually attending Rocky Mountain while sixty-two are choosing to go, oh gosh, Tim, Timpanogus, thank you. I was like, mm, I'm gonna mess that one up. Alright, but on, Timpanogus? Oh, perfect, love that. And then because there's just the Washington High School, we went ahead this year and added the high school into this report so that you could see it. Just so you could see the numbers and how they break down as well and, and as well as the utilization. Alrighty. Okay, so quick, just a quick run-through on our methodology. We look at a lot of different things, we have spatial data that we look at and then we have tabular data that we look at. So we look at information and we, we look at historical birth rates and then our, and we apply those birth rates or what's going to directly impact your kindergarten class. And our mobility factors, mobility and you'll see a slide here in a minute, mobility are people that are moving in and out of those study areas, right? So you've got homes being sold, there's that, that movement that happens. And that impacts all of your student cohorts as they go from, you know, kindergarten to first versus second. All of those get adjusted. And then your student yield factors. So student yield factors, we get the parcel data from the state. State of Utah has a fantastic resource for parcel data, any kind of G.I.S. data that I need, I can go up there and find it. So parcel data, we overlay your students, so it's kind of like, we see where the students are sitting on top of your parcels and then we can identify a little bit more, and I'll go into that here in a second, I'm getting ahead of myself. So that, get those yields that we get, get applied to our residential development. And then, once we get all of that put together, then we can put it through the machine and we get your student forecasts. So here's a little bit on your current and historical trending birth rates. Live births for the county are in blue and y'all's K-class is in red. So y'all always seem to exceed higher than the birth. So when they're born, for example, this year our major was twenty sixteen. So students born in twenty sixteen, we expect them to be kindergartners five years later, okay? And so what this means is you're getting kindergarten students from people moving into the area. So it's just another derivative of those, that influx of people moving in. So you're getting almost all of the births, people, the kids that are born, you're getting people moving in. And maybe even people that are, the students that are enrolling online. So a lot of that can be kindergarten class if y'all have that going on. Next, please. Okay, so mobility factors. Alright, so this is looking at your historical student data, including your current year. So we look at all of this and going back to those study areas that I was showing you earlier, we look at students that are moving into and out of those neighborhoods. And we look at them in a K to first, first to second, all the way up through twelve capacity. And how this works is, for example, K to one, you see one point zero three. What that means is not only did you maintain all the kindergartners, but then you gained three percent. So you gained three more. Alright? So forth, any questions on that? So when we have that, so that's one portion of it. And then the other thing is our student yield, I was kind of going into this a little bit earlier. We have, and as you can see on the left-hand side of this map, these are your colored parcels. Green is single-family detached, the orange, if I remember correctly, is single-family attached. And then we overlay students on this and then we can get an account of how many students live in those housing types and that gives us the rate. And once we get that rate, we can apply that to the development. And we start to get an understanding of how many students are gonna come from that development and it gets matriculated through on your forecast. Next, please.
Really quick on that one?
Oh, yes ma'am.
So is that current?
Yes. I will probably, so once you get, once we get the student yields, we don't have to update those yearly because there's not that much that changes every year. However, going into year two, it is my plan to update these.
It's like Mayflower will probably have apartments by then.
Exactly. And so far, usually we only do these if there is that type of development that's happening in that area. So I believe with Mayflower, sometimes if we don't have that rate, we will find a development that's very, very similar in nature and we will apply those, those rates to that. So, and that's most likely what I did in this case. Thank you. Alright, so this is the residential development dashboard, kind of new for you guys, I sent it a while back. So if y'all need access to it again, just let me know. It's, I'm gonna try to see this, I'm so sorry. On the left-hand side, you've got these pie charts, it tells you that most of the development that's happening is single-family attached. Just two percent, just two percent of your apartments. But single-family attached could be those condominiums, those townhomes, right? Y'all have quite a bit of that. And then single-family detached. And at this time, you have quite a bit of active, but we have a lot that's still classified as future. And those are, there's a lot that's coming, right? So we're taking that into consideration and we're looking at that. And then JR Smith has the largest amount of the development in its geographical area. And it's sitting at seventy-two percent. And then we have Midway with twelve percent and then equally across the other three, or no, sorry, that's a one percent at Heber Valley. And so this crazy little map kind of shows you where all the development is. And if you were to see this actual. So if you were to see this map and actually have it, so this is an online map and it's a very, very interactive dashboard. You could click on those pie charts, query different things and answer and ask questions. And the, the serial chart that's on the right-hand side actually shows you about when the development is happening. So where you see that school year twenty thirty-one, that's where we've put some of that future development. We phased into the last like four years and so that's where, that's what's holding that up a little bit. But some of those other ones you see where, you just kind of see where some of that higher influx of units that are coming online will be. Now granted, this was all as of December, these numbers change constantly. So, but we apply that change in our forecast, so it's, it's already taken into consideration. So we're looking at a total of twenty-one thousand three hundred and sixty-six units total. Now keep in mind, that's including that seven thousand units that's after, after our forecast. So in our forecast, we have ten thousand seven hundred, seven hundred and sixty-two units and the, the units post-study. The twenty-one thousand includes units that have been built already. So that's, that's what's been happening, okay? Okay, JR Smith Elementary School Zone. As I said earlier, seventy-two percent of their population, seventy-two percent of all of the development that's happening in your district. There are a hundred and twenty-four active planned or future projects. Now, when I say that, that means there may be one project, but they've got single-family attached and single-family detached. We treat those as two separate projects because each of those will get applied a different student yield. And so I, I monitor them separately and then phases. So it, again, it might be like Coyote Ridge, multiple phases. I monitor those separately, each of those phases get treated as a separate project. And that's because as we all know, things happen. And suddenly a project that was going to happen, didn't happen, or it suddenly it's built faster than we expected. I like to monitor all of that and keep it, keep an eye on it. And then, yeah.
So if you go back up, just to clarify the board, this is the Swanson property, this driving.
Oh yeah, so Coyote Springs.
So that's actually BXC.
Yeah, but that, and if you go up one more, I thought it was Center Creek, but if that yellow is Swanson, that's all.
Yes, that's one of my. Yeah.
That's where we went on the tour and we looked at an elementary school site.
Yeah.
Potential middle school site.
I have it tagged as Jordan L. Ridge. It's about sixty-five hundred units. So this is, this particular year, this is one area that I really focused on. And, and it's all still classified as, most of it, not, not all of it, I should correct that. Most of it is still classified as future, but I had come across some newer information and I really spent a good portion of a day just looking at the areas, making sure all of those points that we had for, to monitor that development were up to date. So if you were to look at this map compared to last year, this area would be significantly different. So all of those units have been updated and that's where I got that sixty-five hundred units going on.
No, that's great, you can.
Alright, I'm sorry, can you go back up to, thank you. And so the Springs at Coyote Ridge, that's one that's like really started moving over the past year. I think whenever I'd been up here in April of last year, there wasn't a whole lot going on, if I remember correctly. But when we were up here in December, it was like, there was a lot, there was a lot of things being moved in, infrastructure being put into place. And then I have just a little bit of notes about that one. Coyote, Springs at Coyote Ridge is about a hundred and seven units. So we like to include pictures so that y'all can see what we saw that day. This day was a beautiful day, snow for me to trudge through. And, but, so keep in mind that just because there's a ton of units, doesn't always mean there's gonna be a ton of students, right? So depending on the student yield that gets applied, right? Looking at researching and existing students and existing homes. So Springs at Coyote Ridge at this moment, at a hundred and seven units, is only gonna yield about eight students over the next ten years. So now we will monitor this, but at this time, that's what's expected. And then, okay, next slide, please. Now we're looking at Old Mill, so this is, again, we're looking at about seven percent of the development. Thirty-four active or planned, future units, seven hundred and seventy-seven units in this forecast. The total of seven hundred and seventy-seven units in this forecast could yield about seven hundred and ten students, so they have a high yield. So they have, so they have a high yield in this area. As I, as you saw on that, that student density map, it was a really dense area. And fifty-two percent of these are single-family detached. That's where you get that high, that high yield coming from, that had a really higher number. Residential development Midway, we have twelve percent of all development, thirty-six active, planned or future. A little bit over, almost thirteen hundred units in the forecast and then six hundred students approximately coming from that. And then fifty-eight percent are single-family detached. So this was one of my fun little stories, if you don't mind. And, you know, I see these maps all the time. And I look at these maps and I had been seeing this little spiral thing, a spiral area on my map for years, right? And I'm like, what, what is this, I wanna go see this. So finally, when I was out there driving this past December, so I'm a little nervous of heights, you guys, heights scare me. But I managed to get myself up to the top of this, Soldier Hill.
Memorial.
The Memorial Hill.
In December.
Huh? In December.
So you, the road wasn't open, it was snow, right?
Uh, no, it was beautiful, there was, there was no issues. And it was, and it was, unless I'm, unless I'm remembering something wrong.
This is the day, there was no snow in December.
Okay. So it was, and I got up there and I, and it was just beautiful, so I took a little bit.
It's blessed over there.
Yeah. And the thing is, is I really got a sense of the, the unity and the community from it. I, I took some time and I saw all the different memorial placards and I just thought it was just one of the most beautiful things. So I felt really, really honored to have seen that, so I wanted to know that.
No, that's great.
I posted about it on social media and.
It's a really good.
Sean Kelly would agree.
No, it's a great memorial.
It is, so, and then I very slowly got myself down, so, and very nervous, I like.
You are a Flatlander, aren't you?
I am, Texas, y'all. So, and it's funny because it's, you know, it's a nice little hill, it shouldn't be that scary, but it was.
When I was a child, my mom would drive me and my friends up to the top, drive us off.
Oh yeah.
And then she would go down, we would take the straight trail and see if we could beat her to the bottom.
Oh my goodness.
Sliding down the trail.
Beat her?
We always beat her, I don't know if she led us or what.
Did you like have any shoes locked when you were done, like jeans?
Lose your back. That tire mount somewhere.
Smart mom, smart mom. And you know, and ironically, they have something similar in Oklahoma. So I, we, it's over there by a friend of mine and we've walked up it. Not an easy walk, let me tell you, so I was not.
That's, is that lookout down or something like that?
I think so. It's about, it's up and down, it's about six miles total. So it was, it was a workout, that's for sure. I don't know if I'll do that again.
Corey just said he's never been up there.
You've never been?
It's a problem.
I live on the other side of the river.
See, he was more hardcore.
Alrighty, next slide, please. Alrighty, and then we have Daniels Canyon, seven percent of all development. Nine percent are, nine are active units, active planned or future projects, seven hundred and ninety-two units. So there may only be nine, but those are some pretty big projects. Could yield about a hundred and seventy-three students, again, some low, low yields.
That's a ten-year period?
Over a ten-year period, yes sir.
So the seven hundred and ninety-two units, is that the Turner Mill? Cause Orchard's only like nine houses.
Oh no, so that's, the seven hundred and ninety-two is total. So I just tried to put like an example of what, what, some of the stuff that I had seen because there are almost two hundred points of development that I monitor. So every time I come up and visit, I don't get a chance to see all of those, right? I try to pick an area, if there's anything I have a question on, I'll go and look at it. However, one of the really neat things this year is the aerial imagery that we utilize, actually has lots of that on it now. And so it really is helpful, really is. And so, but we still like to see what's happening in person, we have a very, very strong boots-on-the-ground mentality. And so I just like to include on the right-hand side, an example of things I've seen, specific things I've noticed. And then we have forty-two percent of single-family detached, so again, you have quite a few detached homes in this area. Next, please. And then last but not least, Heber Valley. This is actually something I'd stumbled upon. Um, this is actually something I'd stumbled upon, Kimball Val, uh, Kimball Villas, um, on the right-hand side. So they, Hebrew Valley only has 1% of your development, um, 161 units, including this Kimball, Kimball Villas. And about 90 students total.
Where are the students in the building?
I'm sorry?
Sorry, we're trying to put connotation where it is.
Oh, okay. Um, and then 63% of the development that's happening in this, this particular school zone are single-family attached. Next please. Alrighty, so as I, as I mentioned, so the top right-hand corner, that really, really fine print is what's happening individually forecasted in all your study areas. It's just a big printout, but then you get it added up together and that's how we get our forecast projections. Okay, so this is the top portion of our summary of the forecast. Um, it, all of these are only resident students, so it doesn't include your out-of-district, it doesn't include, um, yeah, it doesn't include your out-of-district students. And so when you're looking at this, going left to right, those are impacts from your housing projects. So whenever you saw that serial chart that I mentioned earlier and you see those ebbs and flows of this year's got a lot of units coming online, but the next year has a lot more, that's when you start to see going left to right, that those increases, those bumps in student population. And that red squiggly line, that's your impact from your mobility factors. So that K through one, one through two, that we were looking at earlier, those get applied in these increments. And so when all of this comes together, this is what we're expecting to see of your resident students. And next slide please. And then when we start putting everything back together, we add back in your unmatched, um, we add back in the out-of-district students, um, and with your total students.
What do you get out of district student numbers from, just the ones that are already here?
Yes sir. So they're part of the student file that we get. And so when we, what we call geocode them, we put them on the map with their resident address. They, uh, if they geocode outside of your district boundaries, then they're classified as out-of-district.
So if you're, if you're looking at the district records of where the students are at, you would not be counting like homeschool students, students that live in the boundary, but they don't, they're not registered in our school district. Are they not counted or?
Correct. If, if they are not a part of your student file, then we do not map them. So, and, right, so we don't map them because they're not actually in enrollment in your district.
That was a big question in one of our future schools. That's good to know.
So if those kids change and go to schools, I can see one of those out of the hog kids that we're talking about.
Right, so.
As well, if they change there.
So those kind of fluctuations, we would see in those mobilities. So because you have that historical trend that happens in that mobility, that calculation and percentage, um, it looks at the students that you have, right? So if a student decided to move, or not move, but they lived there, but if they suddenly decided to attend in, attend your district, then you would see that bump in mobility. And then, and then you kind of have your annual change down here. Um, let's see, I'm sorry, could you zoom in just a little bit? Thank you so much. So this is what I was just looking at earlier, just to correct my numbers. Um, this year, uh, in your October students, total population of 8,734. Um, still a little bit less than last year, but last, last year y'all had that, um, online school that had the 2,000 students that were attending. Cause I remember when I got that student file in 2020, I was about to panic. Cause I'm like, how did you guys suddenly have an influx of 2,000 students that we weren't expecting? And, but then, so, but as you can see, y'all are still growing, even though.
But that includes those kids too, that one, right? Total students.
Well, y'all.
We have to look at resident students.
So this one, this portion down here includes all students, um, out-of-district or not. And so y'all have seen a pretty steep decline in your online enrollment. Um, but even still, y'all, y'all have, y'all didn't experience the decline in, from student enrollment like a lot of other districts due to COVID. A lot of, a lot of schools haven't rebounded the way y'all have. Uh, but y'all have so many people moving in, right? Everybody else is losing students because they want to get out of these downtown neighborhoods. You guys are getting those people that are losing, right? Uh, and it, and that is something that I've heard multiple times, um, when speaking with parents, when speaking with developers, um, that they were moving, they were selling their primary homes in California and their secondary homes here were becoming their primary homes. I mean, I honestly can't tell you how many times I heard that story. Um, so that's homes that were once vacation homes, you're, you're now part of your, your student body. So.
We do have another presentation.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
Take about another five minutes.
Okay. So just really quickly, as you can see, you're going up, up and up. Um, that's your K-12 district, or K-12 student population. Uh, you see it moving up. Next please. Same thing, you get kind of a slight little dip, there's probably a, um, a low birth rate in there somewhere that caused that dip that's happening. Maybe there's less development happening in those two years. As, as with any forecast, the first five years are usually really, really good, but the further out you get, the less precise they are. And so as we continue to monitor all of this activity over the next five years, you'll see that tail end fluctuate a little bit. Um, and that's expected, so. Um, and then it looks like as far as your elementary schools, JR Smith is going to have the highest growth. Um, so the light blue is your five-year, your 10-year, it is the dark blue. And so at this time, with the way the trends are right now, this is what we're expecting to see. Next please. And if I had my pointer, so the, so these numbers are really hard to read, but that bottom one, it could be about up to 116 students in growth, if I remember, if I can see that correctly. And so those areas that are red, oh yeah, Cool Beans, I saw that. So the areas that are red are those steady areas where you're going to see the higher growth. Orange, growth, just not as much as the red. And those are, so these are your K-5 student areas of change, okay? The areas are green where you might be seeing neighborhoods that are aging out. Um, so there's a turnover that's happening, so you might be seeing a little bit of a decline. But the biggest, the, the most deepest one is 24. So don't let it alarm you too much. Uh, and the gray areas are no change. Next please. I'm sorry, did y'all want to go back?
Yeah, can you go up? The little, the little ones, I don't know the one.
Paul, what's that area?
That is Center Creek.
Right there, at the bottom.
Where are we, our pointer?
That one? I believe that's development induced.
Um, that would be.
That's like off.
Just that, that's what I'm saying.
That's like off-center Creek Road.
Is it? Is that, that, I didn't think they were going to put houses there, they putting houses?
Hold on, I'm going to see if I can find something.
That's the ball.
There was something, it could be mobility.
So there's a group that just bought a big chunk of ground up there, the, it's, it's actually the old, like old Ryan place that's back in and some more ground with it. That's what we got. That's upper Center Creek and to the south and north side of Center Creek, that'll be.
Okay. All right, and then same thing with your middle school grades. So that, that wobble that you saw in, that small dip that you saw in the K-5, that's where you're seeing that tail end drip off a little bit on this end on, in 2031. Um, but again, you've got that growth. As we continue to bring in the, that phase, that add in the phasing of your future, future homes, that could continue to increase as well. And then Rocky Mountain Middle School is expected to see in 10 years, the most growth, but right now it's.
The.
I will get it.
Say temp.
Temp. I will get it, I promise. Um, but as you notice, you've got those same two areas that are expected to see, um, the most growth in, and this one is up to 94 students in those areas, um, for your six to eight grades. And high school. High school is just, as we mentioned, growing, um, again, might apologize earlier for my math early, uh, in that first slide, I'll correct that. Um, but we just have it growing, it kind of levels off a little bit. But then I think we get a bump due to development and there's probably a bubble that's coming through that increases that 2031. So as these students matriculate through their, you know, their grades, you just see those bubbles just follow on down the line. Next please. And then in this, it's that one little area that you see, and there's quite a bit of development that's happening in that area, that's just a continuation from grade range to grade range of growth. And this one is 100, up to 151 students that are growing in that particular spot. All right, so we've reached the end. Um, so this is just a summary of what, just to pull it together from the previous few slides, what you can expect over the next, you know, current five and 10 years. And then, all right, so, next please, any questions?
Very good, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. I think we just had our comments along the way.
Yeah, tell me, gambling, you were out here doing research, how long ago was it? December?
I believe it was, so I was out here in September of last year, I was out here in December again. And, um, I was out here last April, so last year I made three visits up into this area. And so it's just been, uh, I, I just, I don't know, I'm up here all the time, it feels like. I think I've been up to, to the Los Angeles area, I've, over the past three years, seven times.
I, I can't believe just driving around with all the supply chain issues and people having a hard time getting lumber and contractors are talking about, you know, they're being rationed on their lumber right now.
Yeah.
I can't believe all the homes, all the framed homes that are being built in this valley. If you drive around a little bit, one side of the valley to the other, just the bare plywood homes that are up right now waiting to, to be finished.
Who's, I'm sorry.
There's a block.
Yeah, who's really suffering are the smaller builders, right? The, the ones that don't have the cloud or the big contracts, those are the ones that are really suffering. But it's also what's driving up the pricing in the market because all of those, you know, the pricing of steel has gone up, the pricing of lumber has gone up. I do believe it's gone back down a little bit, but it's still not where it used to be, right? And, and so all of those prices are of course being carried over to the consumer and it's just causing the market to increase as well. And it's just, which is drawing in a different class of people. It's making it harder for the working people to, to have homes here. One of the interest, other interesting things I see all the time is the, looking through some of the, the documentation on the requirements on having worker, worker homes. People that can, that live here and work here can actually afford to live here. Um, and, and, but a lot of those people are being priced out of this market.
Affordable housing.
Yes, thank you, affordable housing.
So are you seeing that with our numbers? Cause we always get asked, well, our prices are going up, people with kids aren't going to move in. Like, how do you?
There will.
Take that in, in these? What is the response?
Right, and we look at that on our student yields. So whenever we do your student yields, that's why you saw the five different categories, is we, you know, what's happening in Midway is not what's going to be happening north of the Jordanell, right? So we've broken it out into five areas and we, we calculate those student yields in each of those areas. So that when you were looking at the yields up north of the Jordanell, they're going to have a different student rate. And, and that's how we, we, that's how we account for that.
The different yields and the different units.
Correct.
Got it.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you, Georgia.
You're so welcome.
Appreciate it. You can come back and visit whenever you'd like, you just can't move here.
I'm very partial.
You can get a house rental up at Memorial Hill.
Y'all have to be like, drop me off, you know? I, if, if, honestly, if my husband would have been with me, I'd have been like, okay, I'm getting out, you're going to drive and I'm just not going to like look. So, but, but as always, it's been a pleasure. Sorry if I went over a little bit long.
No, no, appreciate it. Thank you.
And if y'all have any questions in the future, just holler at me. Have, have Stacy or somebody contact me and I'll see what I can do to answer those, okay?
Great, thank you very much.
Y'all are so welcome.
All right, Valerie, if you want to come up, we'll get a quick overview on where we are in the future teachers, schools, community, or projects. With our two different committees, advisory board committee.
Three actually.
Three. It's teachers.
That's right.
Okay, um, hello everybody. So that was interesting, glad I was late and got locked a second, so I could hear that. Well, we, I wanted to report tonight about facilities, so we've been, uh, doing lots of things. I think, um, last time was we were looking about community meetings that we were planning and educator workshops. So do you want to go to the next slide? So I wanted to start just by giving, uh, just a little update on the timeline. So you can see that we are here live, so we're down toward the end of March, we have, so we've had all the educator workshops, we, and all the community steering committee meetings and advisory committee meetings that we had planned. We've added a couple, um, another advisory and steering committee meeting that will be aligned with the public open house, we'll be meeting with those committees beforehand. We're getting them a copy of the master plan draft on April 1st, we have some time to look at that and give comment. And then we are working on finalizing the master plan draft, so we can come back in April next month to present at the board meeting. And so this was our process graphic that we've been using just to help explain to people what we're doing and when. And you can see that we're, the little clipboard graphic is testing the options with the public, these are the growth options. So we're, we're getting ready, getting to that point now, we've tested those options with the committees, we have drafted the master plan recommendations, so we're getting ready for the public open house. And this is just upcoming events, is the public open house, April 7th. Everybody, um, here, please come, put it on your calendars, looking for all the feedback we can get. And this is a postcard that's going to go out to all the residents, um, in Los Angeles County, inviting them to be there. So it'll be, um, yeah, postcard in English and Spanish and really trying to reach everybody. Okay, so I'll talk about, I'm going to focus on the facility conditions assessments, though we, we've also done an educational suitability assessment from schools, I'll talk about that a little bit too. And so this is a, just a listing of all the, all the district buildings, the ones that are highlighted in yellow are the buildings that we did the facility conditions assessment on. And this is kind of the nuts and bolts, looking at the building materials and the building systems, identifying things that are wearing out, that are maybe already broken, things that need repair, and things that will need repair upcoming. Uh, and you can see it's the four, you know, it's the four older buildings that we're focusing on, next slide. So for the conditions assessment, we looked at a variety of different things. We're looking at the architectural site conditions, so that would be paving and hardscape, landscape, um, other things on the exterior. We're looking at the architectural building conditions, this would be walls and roofs, windows, doors, floors, ceilings, um, finishes, all those things. We did make notes about the portable buildings, um, you know, on, on the sites, it had portable classrooms. Looked at the structural conditions, so this would be the framing systems and foundations, what's holding the building up and keeping it, um, intact when we are hit with earthquakes and things like that. And then looked at the mechanical systems, there are lots of different mechanical systems in buildings, so this includes, includes the heating and cooling systems, air distribution, plumbing, um, water systems, fixtures, kitchen systems, kitchens have special equipment. Looked at automatic controls, all mechanical systems, these days have controls and they're a little bit complicated. And also looked at fire protection systems, so that would be fire sprinklers. And then all the electrical systems, so looked at the site elements, looked at service and distribution, service capacity, interior lighting, lighting control, exterior lighting, powers, fire alarm, data, um, intercom systems, audio visual, and emergency power systems. And we used, um, a serating system that, or a scoring system that's fairly simple, but, but explanatory. So five is excellent condition and one is critical. And those are associated with timeframe. So excellent would be nearly new, no issues to report, planned for eight to 10 years to, um, for, you know, or more for its lifespan. Good would be no immediate issues or concerns, consider reevaluating within six to eight Good would be no immediate issues or concerns, consider reevaluating within six to eight years. Fair is average wear for the age, no immediate issues but consider replacement within five to six years. Four would be worn from use and really nearing the end of the life cycle. And one would be critical, that would be extremely worn or damaged and, you know, needing replacement now. And so for all of those, for all of the things I talked about, all of the different systems that were outlined in the slide above this, we, we scored all of those things with one of these numbers. And we have notes kind of to help explain the ones that need some explaining. And those, um, we, you know, we aggregated those to come up with overall scores. And, you know, one to five for the different systems and then for the whole building. So this is an example of the education suitability score sheet. So this is, we talked about this, I think, in one of the earlier board reports, probably December. We met with the educator, um, committee three times and we worked on developing, um, this tool that we could use to evaluate the educational suitability of each of the schools, not just the four older ones, but all of them. And the educators helped us. So the, the left column has criteria. And the second to left has kind of a description or a metric to that criteria that the teachers helped us develop. And then we scored, we scored these things. There's a kind of a one to five scale up at the top of the screen that really, you know, sort of follows the other. One to five is, is best, one is worst, and, and there's kind of a range of needing to add space or reconfigure space to make these things work better. The educators gave a, a weight to all of these things. They gave an importance, uh, score to them. So we weighed it all of these things so that something that isn't as important wouldn't, you know, oh, impact the score more than it ought to. And then we made some notes in the right hand column about, you know, to justify or explain why the score. So in the master plan document, you'll see, um, we've got a section in one of the later tabs for each school. Called it the school spreads. And with each of the school spreads, this, um, this suitability tool document will be included. So you'll see that there. Um, the conditions report will be in the appendix to the master plan, so you can read all the detail you want there. Okay, let's go to the next slide. Yeah, so that's page two, yeah, there we go.
And Valerie, is this going to be up on the G S, the F S P website? For people to see once it's, once we present it?
Yes, the master plan will be, we can get pieces of this up there now. Um, we've been adding things as we've gone. So, um, an example. In the conditions report, we've got, um, this is just a little aerial photo to kind of help explain each school and then some of the basic information about when it was built and when it was added to or remodeled, what previous uses it might have had, um, student enrollment, square footage, uh, things like that. So we're going to talk about Midway, J R Smith, and, um, the Wausatch High School West Campus building tonight. The, we also evaluated the learning center, but it's a fairly simple building. It's been remodeled recently and there weren't many problems with that. So we'll focus on these. Um, and Midway, important to remember that there was the original building, which is the half that's at the top of the screen. And it was built in nineteen seventy-nine and then it was added to, so the other half of the school was added in nineteen ninety-seven. Let's go to the next page. So, this, the needs listing here is really a combination of what we found as we were looking at educational suitability. And then the next page will go into more detail about the conditions assessment. So obviously, Midway is crowded and it's over enrolled at this point. There are several portables, I think eight classes are out of portables, a lot of them are grade level classrooms. And so additional permanent classrooms are needed unless boundary adjustments are made. Um, the kitchen is, is very small compared to your other kitchens, out of date. So they're having a hard time, I think, keeping up. Um, I think they serve one meal selection and they're struggling with that. So really they need an expanded kitchen. There's not a grease interceptor, you'll see that come up on the next page. So there are some technical things about the kitchen that need work, um, the systems. But, the, um, main office is inboard of the entry and that creates a security situation. A lot of schools were built that way back when we didn't have any worries about people walking in and walking through the building. But now we're concerned about that. There's a lot of violence and all kinds of things that happen. And best practice is really to put the office by the front door. And you know that because you've done that with your later schools and you've made some modifications to your old schools. But at Midway, it's inboard, so there's a, probably a, I think, a doorbell video cam, um, which works okay, but it's kind of easy to skirt, easy to reach. So best to have that office relocated and at the same time expanded. It's very small, doesn't have adequate counseling space, um, doesn't have adequate faculty space. Not a lot of space for small groups, pullouts and meetings, um, P L C space for teachers is needed there. More natural light, there are a lot of internal classrooms that don't have windows or good daylight. At all the schools, um, there's, there are some accessibility improvements to be made at the playgrounds that allow a variety of experiences for kids of all abilities. And then there are a series of building system repairs that we'll talk about here on the next slide. So, and I don't want to, I don't want to bore you to death with the details, but there, there are some mechanical, it's overall, it's pretty good. The building's been maintained well, structural system's fine, so there aren't any concerns about that. There are some air handlers that need to be replaced, some that are original to the building. Fire sprinkler heads are old, the pipes aren't braced sizably. You know, we, as we've learned more about earthquakes over the years, we, our codes have improved and there's a lot of things that we didn't used to do, like bracing with pipes and ducts and conduits so that they don't tear ceilings down in an earthquake. There's a sewer issue, there's a cracked sewer pipe that's causing some motors that, you know, uh, principal and people at the school have noticed. And, um, our engineers, I should say, we have a team of engineers that, that worked with the architects, um, on the assessments. So some sewer, sanitary sewer piping replacement. Galvanized water piping in the old part of the building, which is something we don't do anymore, probably needs to be replaced. Um, the kitchen hood and cook hood need replacement and a make and wear system is needed for the kitchen. A grease interceptor, which I mentioned. The electrical panels are original, so those need up, upgrading, replacing. I think interior and exterior lighting levels are a little bit low and we could use some improvements. An automatic lighting control system, you know, those are, that's something required by the code these days that the older buildings don't have. Need to update or add some outlets for the teachers in the classrooms. There's some fire alarm pull station issues. The sound and intercom system needs some upgrading and, um, we now are required to put an illumination exterior at the exits and that's, that's missed, that's, that's about the next one.
So are you going to do an overall, like, cost assessment of what that's going to?
Yeah, we're doing cost estimates now and kind of on the big picture stuff. And we're, we'll put some together for these improvements also.
And then so did you have a summary score?
Yeah, I'm, I thought that at the end. Maybe I shouldn't have included that.
No, you're fine.
Okay. So J R Smith was built in nineteen eighty-one, um, added to in two thousand and six with a classroom wing and an extension of the multipurpose room. And it's not, it's not over enrolled, but it's crowded if you go there. It, it feels pretty tight, but they're not using portable classrooms. Um, so they're, they're able to kind of make do with what's in the building. Let's go to the next page.
Real quick question on the portables next. So for Midway, when you have that many portables, eh, doesn't that throw all of the structural standards out the window? Because those portables aren't the same as being inside.
Yeah.
So like an earthquake comes in or your fire proof, I mean, those are, those are different.
Yeah.
So how are those weighted?
That's a good question. So, um, well, at our structural engineer wasn't looking at the portables. So we, we made some notes about the portables because there were some things that just, you know, rusty doors and things that just we thought should be noted. But really, we're looking at the old, the main buildings. I don't know, I think they have to be anchored to, I would imagine if it's constructed now, it's got to be anchored in the foundation that meets code.
So those are pretty old.
Yeah. So at, at J R Smith, I think one of the, one of the things that, I mean, I think everybody probably notices, but a lot of people commented on is that, you know, the entry isn't very welcoming. You can't really see in the glass is dark, it looks pretty generic. It doesn't, you know, it doesn't create a great identity for the school. And so, there's not a covered entry, a place for kids to get dropped off early to be maybe sheltered from the weather. So, an improved entry, a more gracious, um, you know, little lobby or something when you come into the building would be a big improvement. Um, there are some issues, I think, with drop off and pickup for the little kids. Um, needing P L C space for the teachers. This is kind of a, a common thing we see throughout the schools. They have, you know, problems or constraints with spaces for small groups when they've got parent teacher conferences or the pullouts. They've got a lot of internal classrooms, classrooms in the media center that don't have daylight. With the addition of preschool, they, preschool had taken over some of the kindergarten classrooms. So, um, the addition of preschool is a great thing, um, but more purpose-built space for the young kids would be great. Uh, parent volunteer meeting and storage space is something that, you know, was never designed in old schools, but, um, something that's, that's needed and has been brought up through this process. The, the multipurpose room here was not designed to divide like, like you typically see and, and it would be a little bit of a problem to do that because of the way the stage is oriented. But that was noted as, as a limiter in terms of what can be done at the same time. There is, I think, a little bit of accessibility issue, some constraints in the maneuvering space around the cafeteria swimming counter. Same issue with accessibility at the playgrounds. And then let's go to the next slide. So, there have been some roof leaks. It seems that maybe the roof was re-roofed and the sheathing was not replaced. And now there's some pullout with the nails that's causing leaks primarily around the perimeter. So it's probably time to look at that and, and pull it off and re-roof and, and re-sheat that as well. There, um, there, there is an issue with the seismic connection of the roof to the walls of the original building. So there's some improvements that need to be made there. There is not a fire protection system in the original building. There are some fan coil units and some other mechanical equipment that are, you know, kind of running out of, coming to the end of their life cycle and need to be replaced. Let's see. This school doesn't have a grease interceptor in the kitchen either, so that would be something that could, I think the city will eventually require. Need to replace the electrical panels, exterior and interior lighting upgrades. It's real dark on the outside. I think we, we all noticed that at the public, uh, community meeting. More outlets for the teachers and the classrooms. Need some new fire alarm devices, the upgrade of the central sound and the intercom system. Let's go to the next page. So this is a west campus building. A lot has gone on at this building over the years, so there's, was more here to this chart, so it's a little bit smaller. Built in nineteen seventy-six, it's Tempano Gis intermediate school. And it's now serving as overflow for the high school. It, it houses the AM tech courses. It houses the alternative high school program. And also, uh, the district's I T departments, some maintenance workshop and storage spaces. And just a lot of things going on there. And, um, it's been added to a number of times over the years, um, which is one of, I think, one of the issues potentially with, with some of the structural concerns. Want to go to the next page? So, and zoom out just a little bit. It's helpful to s, to see kind of, you know, the evolution of things. So the main building, it's outlined in red, was built in nineteen seventy-six. There was a pool house addition in seventy-nine. Couple additions in eighty-one, a classroom addition in ninety, and then a little cafeteria addition in twenty thirteen. And, we'll, we'll, we'll talk about this, some of the structural concerns. But one thing is that, um, there are a lot of joints in the building. I think aid is what the structural engineer noted, which make it difficult, you know, to tie everything together it so that the building operates, you know, moves as it should during an earthquake. So, um, let's go to the next page. So I, I've got a, more slides on this school than we had on the other school, just more, more issues to be discussed. So, the original nineteen seventy-six building, uh, it's made, it's, the, the structure is a precast concrete T beam. So you can picture a T, it's a concrete beam with sections of deck. And, you know, the, the entire roof is constructed of that in the old building. And so, and all of those things have to be connected together. And, and traditionally or typically with that kind of construction, they weren't connected. They weren't used before, current seismic codes not, not connected quite right. And so, um, some of that's been repaired. The district hired a structural engineer in twenty-eleven to do a report and an, an analysis and report. And then I think a ten-year phasing plan to get these things updated. And when you do, when you're trying to make improvements to your roof deck, you try to time that with a re-roof. So you're not pulling off a new, new roof to put, you know, to do work on the deck. And so, the nineteen seventy-six building, this particular improvement is waiting for a re-roof. So there's some, the diaphragm, the roof diaphragm to, to sheer wall connections have been upgraded. And there's been some partition wall bracing that's been upgraded. So some of this work has been done, but, um, other, other parts of it are remaining. So at the pool addition, um, that strengthening has been done. The force transfer between the mezzanine and the walls is deficient. So that's something that still needs to be done to the nineteen seventy-nine building. There have been some connection upgrades, um, of the roof to the sheer walls. And there's been some partition wall, uh, upgrading done. Let's go to the next slide. And so the nineteen eighty-one classroom addition, there's a, a sheer wall that's not, you know, maybe not structured properly. Needs some strengthening. And the nineteen ninety and twenty thirteen additions don't have any structural deficiencies. So architecturally, I think the building is worn out, you know, and it's, it's not, it wasn't, it was designed as a middle school, but that was a long time ago. And I think school and education's being delivered a little bit differently these days. But it's, it's being used, eh, you know, not even quite as it was designed. And it's, it's worn out, the walls, uh, and the roof don't have sufficient insulation to meet current energy codes. The exterior masonry, there's a lot of efflorescence which happens over time with sprinklers and water damage. You'll notice the soffit panels, soffits are the, the kind of overhanging part of the roof, the horizontal element, are worn off or worn out and really missing in, in places around the building. A lot of spalling and cracking in the concrete sidewalks. And the, the majority of the classrooms in the original building don't have good access to natural light. A lot of them are interior. And that's something, you know, it's certainly a best practice to design all learning spaces with natural light. But we heard a lot of talk of this from the community and all of the meetings and outreach events that we've had. People, you know, everybody needs natural light. The restrooms are not all compliant with current accessibility codes. And there's just a lot of wear and tear on the walls, floors and ceilings. Locker rooms are out of commission, so they're not being used as such right now and, and they've got some damage to them. And the kitchen's been decommissioned, so it's not being used as kitchen right now. It's being used as a studio storage. It's been divested. Mechanically speaking, there are some, um, rooftop units and air handlers that need to be replaced that were part of the original construction. Plumbing fixtures are in good shape. The water piping is a mixture of galvanized copper and PEX. There's, there's no indication now that there are problems with rusty or discolored water, but something the mechanical engineer thinks ought to be, um, considered and put on the schedule for replacement. There are a lot of issues with the mechanical control system, so it's not working in a lot of the, in a lot of the building. And so a new control system would be an important thing. And the air qual, indoor air quality is, you know, not good because the controls in the system aren't working well. Sprinkler heads, fire sprinkler heads are old and need replacement. And then we've got the same issue with the bracing of that piping. Let's go to the next page. Electrically, um, lighting levels are, are low, need some upgrade there. Some of the electrical panels are original to the building and are running out of capacity, need replacement. No automatic lighting controls through the building, which, you know, is a code requirement these days, saves you energy costs. Need some more power outlets. There's something kind of strange going on with the wire-in system. It's a modular plug-in system and not what we do these days. And then some upgrades to the fire alarm devices. Sanic intercom system's not working real well and need some elimination outside the building exits. So, um, so I think that building has got, you know, a lot, a lot going on. And in our master plan recommendations, we're looking at different alternatives to what you might do with that building. In conjunction with, you know, thinking about what you do with the overpainting at the high school and, and building future high schools. And so, um, different possibilities there and you can read more about that in the master plan draft. But, um, but a lot, a lot of work to be done here.
What's the, what's the plan to get this information to the committees?
We are, we're sending the master plan draft, um, on April first and that'll...
Can it include the type of, you will?
Yeah, they've already got.
Will they receive this?
Yeah.
Okay, good.
Yeah. So the, the larger...
I wasn't aware of that, so if you answered my question.
The conditions report is, will be in the appendix of the master plan, but we finished it up sooner or we got that to the committees.
Great. What did they say? What did the committee say about?
I don't, I don't know, they haven't made comment on it yet. So, um, maybe they haven't already. We, we do reiterate, we summarize this stuff in the master plan document too. So, yeah, the Learning Academy I mentioned, it's, um, it was originally a seminary building, so it's not very big. It's, um, it's, it's doing fine, honestly. It's not a complicated building and it was refinished to accommodate the, um, online school program. And so, it's got new finishes, kind of reconfigured space and doesn't have fire sprinklers, but I think that because of the size of it, that's probably not required. Might be good to think about adding it maybe. Breakroom cabinets, missing doors, but all in all, it's doing well. So, this is the scoring. And we've broken it down by the different categories, architectural, structural, mechanical and electrical. And you can see that the Learning Academy, I'd like to score here. Midway and J R Smith are kind of neck and neck. You know, a little, a little above fair, not, not quite too good. And the Wausatch West Campus is, is down there between poor and fair. So it's, it's in the worst shape of the buildings, um, when we assessed. Nothing's in the critical range where, you know, everybody get out, right? You've got some time, you've got some time to think about things and, and, you know, initiate some processes to decide what you want to do. initiate some processes to decide what you want to do with the building and, and the activities and programs that are housed inside it.
Remind me of the timeframe on fair. Is that three to five years?
Yeah, fair is, I'm not having fun with me. Stacy, can you flip back to the...
I thought it was...
There it is.
Yeah, yeah.
Five to six. So, and I think, let's see, is there one more slide? Oh yeah, I wanted to just tell you that, back to the educational suitability and you'll find this in the master plan draft, but we, we took that bigger suitability matrix and we evaluated, we evaluated things, all of those different categories against guiding principles that were developed by the community and then also against the space, kind of space type and functional needs. And we scored those as well. So just to give you an idea of how the schools are performing in terms of educational suitability with the, kind of the more aspirational goals and then also the kind of functional programmatic space needs.
I think it would be helpful for the board to just understand the, the risk that's associated with portables. And I'm not getting that from this report and I had an initial question because it comes up.
Yeah.
Right now our fix is, and we just talked about it in an earlier budget session, okay, will we just buy a $250,000, $300,000 portable? That gives us an immediate classroom. But we don't control who's, which kids or which groups of students go in and out of the, or which teachers go in and out of there. And I have to believe that there's a higher risk when it comes to all of these or some of these, when, if you're in a portable versus being in a, a school.
Yeah, I think everyone we talk to, you know, within this process, but I think, you know, would be just kind of a common assumption that you're not as safe if you're outside the, the secure perimeter of the school. At JR Smith, the portable's actually outside the perimeter fence, so that, that, you know, I think is makes it a no-go to even use it as a classroom. So I, we, I can definitely...
That would just be helpful. Not a ton of work, but just so we can have some language around that. And, and I, I mean, you know, you have my opinion on the thing. I don't think it's the same. I mean, and when a kid goes into a portable or a teacher goes into a portable, I think it's a disaster. And so where does that come out of this report? I don't think it's there now, but it would be nice to see if there's any logic or data behind what I'm thinking.
Yeah, yeah. Well, that's...
Valerie, also the, you know, if there could be a little more definitive assessment on, what if there is an earthquake? You had chaired with the committee regarding a school, a middle school, I believe, I believe there was just an article about it on KSL in Salt Lake during that last earthquake that had this similar T-concrete beam construction that failed miserably.
Yeah.
Is there some danger if, if, if there is a, if there is a sizable earthquake in the future that, that it could, that roof could fail?
Yeah, so this school you're talking about is Westlake Junior High, which is in the Granite District. So it's in, it's in West Valley. So it was, and it was close to the epicenter of, you know, the magnitude earthquake. So it depends, of course, where the earthquake happens and, you know, that would determine how badly the building's impacted. But that building had, what the code classifies as disproportionate earthquake damage, which means that for the size of the quake, it, it, because it wasn't that big an earthquake. I mean, it was, it was significant but not, not huge. So it, it, but it caused disproportionate damage to that structure because it wasn't designed, it wasn't designed, you know, to be able to withstand the earthquake. And so there was, there was just damage, you know, in some places, ceiling spilled down and things that would have really hurt people. But the more broad spread damage was cracks throughout the masonry walls and most of the walls were masonry and under-reinforced. And so, so we know, I mean, we know it's, it's obviously a danger and a concern. I, I don't know that the structural engineer, I mean, certainly we can keep, you know, we can tell you what kinds of things have happened to past earthquakes, you know, to structures like this. There were places in that building, not, not a lot, but there were places where the beams were torqued and twisted and weld plates. They were open and, and those are all things that are...
Did they go back to school in that building?
No, they're gonna, they went through an, an insurance settlement process so to define the damage and what retrofit, you know, what a retrofit would be and what it would cost. And then the district ultimately gave the decision that it was, you know, estimates to repair the thing and retrofit it were like 34, I think, or 30, yeah, 37 million actually in September of 2020. In December of 2021, the cost estimate was revised for today's dollars and it was up to 44 million. So the district said, well, gosh, you know, it's not going to be that much more to build a new one, so they made that decision. So I think it's been demolished now.
Interesting. Thank you. Any other questions for Valerie? We appreciate the update.
Sure.
Very, very helpful, yeah. Yeah, I think the full break, it's been, we've been here since two, so we're, the board's going to take a 10-minute break and then we're going to come back down and get this thing started, the board. Thank you, Valerie.
You're welcome.